I want to welcome everyone. This is the February 6th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I'm Scott Halupka, Chair of the Board. I will now start the meeting with a roll call. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Oh, for those of new board members, remember to hit the speaker near you so that people out in the audience and elsewhere can hear us. Ms. Brophy is absent. Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Munesses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
And Mr. Tennant is absent. Now, will you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to take a moment to introduce at least two of our new board members, Mr. Edward Brady and Mr. Mark Duval. Mr. Christopher Tennant is not here, but hopefully we'll be introduced to him at the next meeting. Mr. Brady and Mr. Duval, would you like to briefly introduce yourselves?
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am originally a South Carolina native. My parents moved to Maryland in the early 60s during a great migration from the north to the south. We settled in West Baltimore. I went to Baltimore City Public School System, graduated from Baltimore City College High School, joined the police force, got off the police force after six years, became, got into fast foods, been in the fast foods ever since, and I'm a small business owner in Baltimore, Maryland, on a Burger King in Baltimore, and I live in Rice's Town. I love Baltimore County. I've lived here for 44 years.
Thank you.
I'll figure it out. Yeah. My name's Mark Duval. I live in northern Baltimore County, lived in the Hereford Zone since before it was called the Hereford Zone. I'm a farmer. I'm also a retired engineer, and so now I just farm full-time and looking forward to helping out here on the board. Thank you.
And then today is likely the last meeting for Mr. Hafer. So, Mr. Hafer, I don't know if you want to say a few words?
Sure, just to let everyone know, I'm fulfilling a lifelong dream of living at the beach and will be moving to Lewis, Delaware, so you may see me around the outlets if you're down there and doing any shopping. It's been a great honor to be on the board. I've really enjoyed every moment of it, and just to remind everyone of the importance of the work that we do and to, you know, just keep swimming. Thanks.
Thank you, and you will be missed. Again, big shoes to fill and I won't be able to bring you back a third time. Ms. Pachek, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes to the agenda.
Thank you. In the January 30th email, you received draft minutes from the January 16th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the January 16th meeting minutes? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motions, the minutes carry. The first item in our agenda tonight is an introduction of the Jacksonville Community Plan. Ms. Abigail Rogers from the Department of Planning is here with us to present the plan to the board. Ms. Rogers?
Hello? Oh, that worked. Hi. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening to the board. My name is Abigail Rogers. I'm with the Department of Planning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the Council One District Community Planner, but formerly I worked for the rural northern sector, so I was the community planner in the Jacksonville area when I started this project, and I'm seeing it through the end. So, this was started by the Council Resolution 3523 in December of 2023. This authorized the updating of the Jacksonville Community Plan. This was due because the last plan was from the year 2000, and not much has changed, but it's important to keep the information up to date. Basically, all the information was from the 1990s. And the Greater Jacksonville Association members are here today. David Palmer is the President, the Chair of the Greater Jacksonville Association, and I'd like to give them most of the credit because although my department has offered support and coordination, this is their effort, and I'd like to give credit where it's due. And they'll also be here to answer some questions about the plan and the community at the end. So, the main community outreach for this project was the Town Hall Meeting, which was January of 2024. It was in-person in Jacksonville, and the draft plan was posted on the GJA website for public comment, and even outside of that meeting, people were free to email, give their thoughts and such. And the plan was revised by our department, but also a few different departments from the county, like Depp's, Wreckin' Parks, Aging, Zoning, and also other groups such as the State Highway Administration and also the Carroll Manor Recreation Council, gave some comments, and we incorporated those changes. So, the main change, I mentioned that not a whole lot has changed since 2000, other than sort of the demographics, traffic information, but there is a downtown, there's the village core, the commercial core of Jacksonville, and a property is being added to that commercial core. That's because it was rezoned during the 2024 CZMP. It went from being RC5 and a little bit ROA to being BLCR. So, the Jacksonville, the GJA and I, the Planning Department, agreed that it made more sense to add this property to the village core. And this is important for it to be in the village boundary because Jacksonville is looking into having a sort of, what do you call, a recognition sign? Yeah, certification that the property owner has looked at the Greater Jacksonville Plan and understands it. And this is to, like, preserve the character of the Jacksonville core. So, I'll be giving a more detailed presentation on February 20th. There will be a hearing and a vote, and with that, I'd like to open the floor to questions.
Does anyone have any questions at the moment? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a chance to look through it a couple of days ago, and there are a lot of good things in there, so I want to commend you guys for all your hard work. I did have a question, however, as it pertains to designation as a village, as defined in our 2030 Master Plan. And as I recall, you know, its primary use is rural, commercial, but it also has secondary land uses associated with it, and it's offices, civic, institutional, which you all have, open space, which you have some of, and, but what's missing is, like, the fourth one is medium-density residential. And what occurred to me was, you know, you go right from, you know, rural housing, you know, big acre lots, housing, and then there's not much of a buffer transition zone there before you get to commercial. And the reason I'm asking is, there's a lot of pavement, there's a lot of parking lots in your, right in the middle of your village or along the edges. I was wondering if you guys thought about incorporating some, you know, low, medium residential apartments or something like that, and maybe getting rid of some of that asphalt? Because we all know about, you know, our housing challenges, especially affordable housing. I was just also wondering about, like, is there senior housing nearby?
There is not. David Palmer, President of the Association. The Erdl really determines what type of housing you're going to have, because you need it, like, an RC5, it's an acre and a half.
Right.
So, there are no apartment buildings, per se.
Right.
So, that would address your issue, so we wouldn't be able to do that. You have, it's an area that really is farmland, surrounded by some developments, and then you have this one smaller area, the commercial area, the BLCR and ROA areas, and it's really confined to that smaller area. There is no more land to build a commercial development. The, what Abigail was talking about was there was one RC5 property that changed to the BLCR before the line was ended, right before then. It's now going to include them. So, I understand your concerns, but because of the water and the urban, I can tell you that people in the area, for whatever reasons, it may just be the water and the safety, have opposed having apartment buildings in the area. And I've lived there 30-some years, and that was long before I came there, but I don't think the water restrictions under Erdl would allow what you were suggesting, although good suggestion generally, it wouldn't apply to this area.
Right. I'm aware of the history with some of the water issues you all have had. I was just thinking, maybe we could tear up some of that asphalt parking lot instead of building outside your little village, but building kind of more inside.
Well, I don't know that there'd be rooms. The biggest parking lots would be the Manor Shopping Center.
Right.
Where Safeway is, and they would need that. There's the one for the Kleins, which is up Jacksonville Pike a little bit, which is the ShopRite, and the one at, I think it's 14217, it's one, it's off for sale right now, and there's a parking lot there. The rest of the parking lots are very small, because that really is the entire area. The commercial area is not very big, it just really isn't. And while we always want to have water not flow off cement or something like that, the commercial area is really limited. It hasn't changed dramatically in a long time. The last major change, 20-some years ago, when the Kleins went in there, and then we actually, Greater Jacksonville Association, actually supported that. It had zoning for commercial and some RC5. The Baltimore County Council unified it. We still have an RC5, and that's it. We, the Association, have opposed all other changes, and even the one that's going to be added right now, which is 14202 Jarrettsville Pike. But now that it's been changed, we're working with the owner and his attorney, Mr. Karceski, to include it. So, it was really two things. Number one, we suggested, one of the problems with a community plan, be it ours or anybody else's, people don't know about it. They just don't know about it. They come into the area and they don't know about it. What we suggested, which I think is being adopted into the plan now, is that when a developer or a new business comes in, that when they seek a permit, that they certify that they have read the community plan, and that when the permit is submitted to the Baltimore County Agency, that a copy of that permit be sent to the Board of Directors or the Greater Jacksonville Association. And that way, we can work with the owner or developer to go over things. We've done that a lot in the past, but our general recognition is that most people don't know the first thing about a plan. People in the Association do, because they come to the meetings, but that's not everybody. And you bring somebody outside that comes into the Jacksonville area, they don't know the first thing about a community plan. So, that idea was to get that information out there. It doesn't have, and it doesn't have the force of law. One of the problems, of course, is it doesn't have the force of law, but it's going to go into the Master Plan. I don't know if I've answered it or talked too much about it, but I wanted to be thorough.
Fine, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I was a trial lawyer before I retired. That was one of the problems.
Anybody else have any questions right now?
All right.
Thank you very much. We'll see you again in a couple of weeks. If there are no further questions, I will now entertain a motion. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a public hearing regarding the Jacksonville Community Plan for Thursday, February 20th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will see you guys in two weeks. Other business, report from the January 16th, 2025, meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
At their January 16th, 2025, meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue three certificates of appropriateness of the following properties, the Hefter property in Pikesville, the Craig Howard property in Kingsville, and the Costa property in Moncton. And that concludes that report.
And are there any recent council legislation of interest to the board?
Yes, we have two, Bill 10524, zoning regulations, special regulations for cemetery in the density residential DR2 zone, for the purpose of clarifying that a cemetery in the DR2 zone is permitted by special exception under certain circumstances and in certain locations in which the use is permitted by right and generally relating to cemeteries and the DR2 zone. Resolution 225, Department of Planning, Small Area Plan Process of Resolution, Baltimore County Council requesting that Baltimore County Department of Planning to begin the Small Area Plan Process as outlined in Master Plan 2030. All areas were identified on a map in Master Plan 2030 for the Small Area Plan Process. The Small Area Plans will build on the work of previously adopted community plans, sustainable community area plans, and the themes and goals of Master Plan 2030. And that concludes that.
Thank you. That is the conclusion of today's agenda. Before we adjourn though, I will remind everyone that we have a public hearing at 5:00 to review the public, the basic services map. So, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second? Second. Approved? Aye. See everyone back here in about 10 minutes. Good evening again. Welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing on the Basic Services Map. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Scott Halupka, Chair of the Planning Board. We will start with a roll call to account for members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy is not here. Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Munesses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
And Mr. Tennant is absent. The Basic Services Maps were introduced to the board on January 16th, 2025, with a presentation by Andrew Brown from the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Tonight, Mr. Brown is here to further present the maps to the board. Following the presentation, board members will have a chance to ask questions, and then members of the public will have the opportunity to speak on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Brown.
There we go, Tess. All right. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Brown. I'm an engineer and project manager, serving the Bureau of Engineering and Construction in the Sewer Design Section, and tonight I'm joined by fellow engineer Chris Nebry with the Division of Traffic Engineering, and we are here to present a more detailed account of the 2025 Basic Services Maps for our public water, sewer, and transportation systems. As you may recall, the Basic Services Maps are defined by the County Zoning Regulation Article 4A Growth Management, Section 4A02, Basic Services Maps. As mentioned during the last board meeting, the deficiencies reported are unchanged from the deficiencies reported the prior year, and in accordance with your requests, we will elaborate further as to why that is. Today, we'll provide a more detailed look at each of the deficiencies and areas of concern, and I'll discuss the Basic Services Maps for Water and Sewer, and Mr. Nebry will discuss the Transportation Map. I'll start with the simplest one first, and that is the 2025 Basic Services Map for Water. There remains no deficient areas. This means that all fire flow tests met or exceeded the required water pressure. Fire flow testing standards are determined by the National Board of Fire Underwriters, and they require a pressure of 20 PSI for effective firefighting. The city of Baltimore is the owner of the public water system and performs hydrant tests on a nine-year cycle for the over 14,000 hydrants in the county and over 8,000 hydrants in the city. Testing is limited to summer months due to the temperature constraints. Okay, moving right along, we're going to discuss the 2025 Basic Services Map for Sewer. The Sewer Design Section reported one deficient area and five areas of concern, which was unchanged from the areas they identified the year prior. Now, while these areas remain, significant progress has been made towards eliminating many of them. So, before we go into detail on each area, I'd like to note that the deficient areas are determined by the lack of capacity to convey existing sewage flows. Areas of concern are identified as areas requiring additional scrutiny as a result of various conditions. These conditions include areas tributary to known constructed sanitary sewer overflow structures and areas with observed or recorded evidence of surcharging during wet weather conditions. The closure of the existing sanitary sewer overflows is being addressed by the consent decree. So, our goal is to eliminate deficient areas and areas of concern, but it is important to understand that doing so often involves the coordination with other agencies outside of Baltimore County and requires multiple rehabilitation and construction projects that span years, not months. While reported deficiencies and areas of concern did not change this year, the Department of Public Works and Transportation is hard at work. In 2024 alone, over 18,000 feet of new or replacement sewer mains were installed. We rehabilitated over 174,000 feet of sewer main, and I am pleased to report that the completion of these projects has allowed us to begin work this year on closing nine of the existing sanitary sewer overflows, which, once closed, will allow us to remove the several areas of concern. So, with all that said, let's dive into each of the six areas shown on the map and discuss the progress made, what we're planning to do in the near future. I will start with the one deficient area reported, the Richland Manor Wastewater Treatment Plant located in Perry Hall. So, during heavy rain, the incoming flow at the plant significantly increases, and the wastewater treatment flow exceeds the 80% of the treatment plant's reserve capacity. And in accordance with MDE guidelines, the treatment plant is to be considered deficient during those heavy rains, and that's why the area of Perry Hall is identified as deficient on the 2025 Basic Services Map. We have completed one rehabilitation project to reduce the flow to the plant during heavy rain, and we are working through the permitting stage of another rehabilitation project in the area. We also continue to advance a project to build a pumping station that will ultimately replace the treatment plant entirely. These improvements, once completed, will allow this deficient area to be removed from the map. Our next area, Herring Run in Parkville, has been identified as an area of concern. There are two sanitary sewer overflow structures in the area. That's number 41 and 129. They're shown as green dots on the map. Previously, during heavy rain, the sewage system would become temporarily overwhelmed by infiltrating ground and stormwater, and this resulted in overflows. But we have completed a significant amount of rehab work in the sewer system in Park, in the Parkville area, and we also have eliminated illegal connections into the system. Additionally, we constructed a relief sewer, and a second relief sewer project is nearing completion. These projects will reduce the risk of the sewer system becoming temporarily overwhelmed during heavy rain and reduce the chances of basement backup in the area. And I am pleased to inform you that we've directed the Bureau of Utilities to close off these structures, and that work is now in progress. The Bureau of Utilities reported that as of January 23rd, structure number 41 has already been closed, but unfortunately, the timing of these closures did not allow us to change the designation on this year's map, but once both of the structures are closed, we anticipate being able to remove this area of concern. The next area is Marnat Road. This has been identified as an area of concern. There is one sanitary sewer overflow structure in this area, number 113, again, shown as a green dot. Similarly, during heavy rain, the amount of sewage in the collection system temporarily overwhelms the sewer system, resulting in overflows. We've completed sewer rehabilitation projects in the area to reduce INI, that's infiltration and inflow, that enter the system during heavy rain, and we have eliminated illegal connections. Now, while these efforts help reduce the risk of overflow, the construction of a relief sewer will be required prior to closing off the overflow structure. This relief sewer will be constructed by Baltimore City to add capacity to their sewer system. We continue to communicate with the city on a regular basis to get updates on their efforts to complete their studies and analysis that are required by the city's consent decree. The studies and analysis must be completed before they can construct this overflow sewer. Once the city has completed their improvements, we can close the sanitary sewer overflow structure and remove this area of concern from the map. Next is the area in Brooklynville, and it's been identified as an area of concern. Please note that the deficient area depicted on the 2024 Basic Services Map was defined and implemented by the Baltimore County Council through Bill 1724. The Department of Public Works did not identify this area as having deficient sewer capacity on the 2024 Basic Services Map, and that remains the case for the 2025 map. Now, in this area, similarly to the others, during heavy rain, the flows in the collection system are temporarily overwhelmed, and then it results in surcharging of the existing sewer system. John Hopkins Healthcare Surgery Center Development LLC and the developer of the Greenspring Manor subdivision were required to construct relief sewers to eliminate the surcharging during heavy rain, and the projects are in the design and permitting phase. They have not yet begun construction. These improvements, once completed, will increase the capacity of the sewer system and reduce the possibility of surcharging, enabling us to remove this area of concern from the map. Next, we have the Powder Mill area. It's been also identified as an area of concern. There are four sanitary sewer overflow structures here, number 22, 23A, 23B, and 24, again, shown as the green dots. During the moderate to heavy rain, the sewage system would become temporarily overwhelmed by infiltrating storm and groundwater. This would result in overflows. However, we've completed a significant amount of rehabilitation work to the sewer system and the Powder Mill Interceptor. Construction of the Phase Two Powder Mill Interceptor Relief Sewer has also been completed. These improvements will reduce the risk of sewer system becoming temporarily overwhelmed during heavy rain, and it allows to close the sanitary sewer overflow structures in this area. And I am, again, pleased to report that we have directed the Bureau of Utilities to close the four sanitary sewer overflow structures in this area. Once those closures have been completed, we anticipate that we'll be able to remove this area of concern from the map as well. All right, and then, stick with me, everybody. Last but not least, we have Catonsville area, my backyard, life great, 21228. The last area identified as an area of concern is located in Catonsville. There are three sanitary sewer overflow structures in this area, number 116, 117, and 118. During moderate to heavy rain, infiltrating storm and groundwater will temporarily overwhelm the sewer system, resulting in overflows. We've completed a significant amount of rehabilitation of the sewer system in the area in an effort to reduce the INI that enters the sewer during heavy rains, and we've eliminated several illegal connections. With the completion of these projects, we've directed the Bureau of Utilities to close sanitary sewer overflow structures 116 and 117. The closure of SSO number 118 will require the construction of a relief sewer, and again, this sewer will be constructed by Baltimore City to add capacity to their systems, and we've continued regular communication with the city to get updates on their efforts to do their studies and analysis prior to the construction of this relief sewer. And now, that is, that covers all six areas of the sewer map, and I'm going to pass the mic off to my colleague Chris Nebry with the Division of Traffic Engineering to go over the 2025 Transportation Basic Services Map.
Good evening, board members. My name is Christopher Nebry from Traffic Engineering Bureau of Transportation. What we are presenting is the Basic Service Map for 2025, just a little brief on the evaluation, on the designation of these traffic sheds and deficient areas. The county, our office, we observe and study all signalized intersections in the county, but the ones on the map, we do in a yearly cycle, and the rest, we do in a five, a three to five-year cycle. How these things are evaluated, these intersections are evaluated, we have our traffic count team, they count the cars, and they also observe the congestions along the leg. They count- They count, not, yeah, not only they count the, the cars, but what constitutes to the metric for congestion is what we call a load, a load failure. And, yeah, every cycle, if they see a car that does not make it through an intersection, they consider that a loaded cycle. And there, the percentage of loaded cycles in the peak hour corresponds to a letter grade. So the higher the load cycle failure, the, the lower the grade. So in that being said, we have, on the one, on the map that we are presenting, we have ten Level of F intersections and one Level of E intersection. Level of F intersections, they have, they have designated, they have like a boundary around them that, that is shown in pink, and these zones control development where there is a moratorium on development. The E level of, E level, level of service, they're almost F, but they're not, there's no moratorium, however, there are reserved trips that could be allocated for developed site on that, in that area. And Level of Service D, there is no moratorium on development, however, it's just like a warning that it's getting close. All right, so the, the, yeah, just reading off the ten Level of F intersections, we got in the county, we got National Pike at Rolling, Bellona at Charles, Bloomsbury at Frederick, Burke in York, Falls in Seminary, Falls in Joppa, Falls in Greenspring Valley, Falls in Shawan, Frederick and Rolling, Joppa and Lockraven, and Perry and Putty Hill, and we have an E intersection at Joppa and Perry Parkway. Just a caveat that there is no shed in the Falls and Shawan area because it's outside the Erdl. Okay, so this next slide, we are showing there were changes from the final signed map of twenty twenty-four to the map that we are presenting today. The twenty twenty-four map shows that there's an area that was cut out of, of the shed, of, of the traffic shed. However, when we presented it in twenty twenty-four, our presentation was close, was exactly the same as the twenty twenty-five draft. That cut out was due to a council bill, a council bill, that was a modification per Bill seventeen twenty-four. So that, this, for that shed is for the Frederick Road and South Rolling Road shed. Next slide. There were no changes, this is the Falls Road shed. Then there, there were no changes through Bill or nor letter grade. Okay, in the Taos Lutherville area, there is a shed that was shown on the twenty twenty-four map. However, when we presented it, we did not present the shed. That intersection is York and Ridgely. For our, for our evaluation, the intersection of York and Ridgely is Level of Service C. So that was, that area that is shown on the twenty twenty-four final was also per Bill, Council Bill seventeen twenty-four, dash twenty-four. And in this, this area, in the Parkville area, we see that there's a small, there is a change, not in Level of Service, however, reserved trips for the, the intersection of Perry and Joppa. Last year's map had seventeen reserved trips for developed site, and for this year's map, there is a change where it is now eighty-three trips that are reserved for developed site. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Happy to answer questions.
I guess I will now take questions from the board. Mr. Hafer?
Sure, thank you for your presentations. They were very informative. Just a quick clarification question about the process. When, when you were mentioning that things were changed due to, to a bill that passed through the council, so does that mean that you did your work, it came here, we then approved it, it went to the council, and they made changes to the plan themselves, kind of like they do with the zoning process?
That's, that's generally correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Panero?
To piggyback off of that, Bill three twenty-five that's currently being discussed in the council right now, what impact will that have if that passes on the Basic Services Map as you presented?
I'm not really aware of a direct impact on this Basic Services Map.
Okay. Okay, it's in, I think, believe it was discussed at the last work session, and it's going to be discussed next week as well, with the vote taking place on the eighteenth, unless I'm reading that wrong. Is there, can we look into that to see what impact it would have if it were to be passed?
Happy to review it, sure.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Generally modernizing the method of calculating the failing intersection to bring it to current standards, the current Basic Services Maps for legislation pertaining to these, I think, and it dictated the methodology at that time, and now it's bringing it up to what we're doing.
So then what we just saw would change? The number of failed intersections would most likely increase or decrease? Okay. And then that will go into effect for next year? Okay.
Steve Heinel, my question would be is, all these failed intersections look like they're, most of them anyway, are within the Erdl, and if we're trying to increase development in the county and redevelop in certain areas, and obviously, these places are somewhat desirable, and they're creating these failed intersections, how do we jive that with what we're trying to do with enticing more, you know, good buildings within the Erdl, so we don't have to build outside of it, with these failed intersections that are creating what I understand to be a moratorium in areas that are highly desirable?
All right, I could clarify one thing. In the Basic Service Map, there is a revitalization zone that was shown in pink within those, sorry, that were shown in purple within those pink areas, and those revitalization districts, I believe, are exempt from the moratorium.
I, I have a couple, the, the one in Perry Hall, the sewer shed, the Richland, that Richland?
The, the deficient?
The deficient one.
Yes.
So currently, what, there is like a, a mini sewage treatments plant there?
Yes, there's, there's a wastewater treatment plant there, Richland Manor.
And where does that, where does it discharge into?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head as far as the specific discharge. Lisa?
Okay. And so the, it was, if they build a new pumping station, it will no longer discharge, it will now run into the, the, I'm assuming Back River?
Yes.
Okay. That, that was my, my question about that.
Where is the, the new pumping station located then for Richland Manor? Okay. Thank you. Got it.
And then I guess this is just a more general question, and I'm not sure if it's to you, but also, do we have, is there any consolidated map? I know that, you know, we have the, the moratoriums based on traffic sewer issues. I know that the council just passed a moratorium based on school overcrowding. Is there any consolidated map that shows these are all the areas that we currently can't build in?
There is none at this time.
I don't know who would put it together, but it might be something useful to have. Thank you both. Is there no, oh, Ms. Panero?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the bill. It says that it would take effect forty-five days after it's enacted. So wouldn't that affect this year?
These must be due by the end of the year, so they're in, based on the current standards.
Okay.
So this would be applicable as we do the analysis moving in through next year?
So for any developments that have hearings this year, this, this will go, this will be what they go off of, off of the, the failed intersections? Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarification.
Thank you both, unless there are any other questions. We would all call upon those who have completed the sign-in sheet located in the Jefferson Building lobby to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order that they register. Please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. If you are with an organization, please give your name and the organization you represent. Do we have any speakers?
We just had one speaker sign up, wasn't quite sure if he wanted to speak. Edward Constro, I think. Sir? He doesn't want to speak, so.
Okay. At this time, we have then no one signed up to speak this evening. Are there any further questions, comments from the board? If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. See everyone in two weeks.